Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phone. Be advised, these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chambers who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chambers and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes of speaking time. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order on Tuesday, August 13, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. The invocation will be given by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, and a pledge will be given by Councilwoman Savino. Please stand.
Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to gather together as a group of thy children, to learn and grow and to progress. We're thankful for the opportunities we have to help the city at AL, that we might do good, and that as we go about the business tonight, that it might be dedicated to thee, that we do things in accordance with thy will. We ask a special blessing upon all those who are in authority, that they might be inspired and that they might accomplish things that will be good in the future as well as now. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilwoman. So, Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Savino.
Present.
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
I am here.
And Mayor Hussey.
Present, thank you.
And we have a call. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ordering additions or removal of any items on the agenda? Do I have any?
No additions or deletions.
Councilmembers, none? Okay. Public comment, item B. This is an opportunity for the members of the public to comment on any item not appearing on the regular agenda because restrictions contained in California law. The city council may not discuss or act on any items on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarifications. The mayor may also request brief response from staff to questions raised during the public comment, or may request the matter be agendized for a future meeting. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir. The first one is Shad Bowle.
Hey, Mayor and city councilmen. My name is Shad Bowle. This here is more for sharing information to the public and showing appreciation to what you guys do. Fellow citizens of Grand Terrace, did you know that for tonight's meeting, our city council had to go through 316 pages of documents to prepare for this meeting? That's a lot of pages. Did you know that all this is available for you to read, too? It's open. It's a very transparent council. You can go to the City of Grand Terrace website, not the community's, not 92313, none of those Facebook things, but actual the city webpage, and you look up the meeting agenda packet. All that information is here. I can say that after reading all 316 pages, that I am thankful for the snapshots that we have here today, because believe you me, you don't want to have to read all 316 pages. So, thank you, guys. And I also just want to say that I support, which we'll be talking later on, SP 1701, the gateway to Grand Terrace. Looking forward to what that's going to bring, our Grand Terrace. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Shad. I usually get books on audio for that, so appreciate it. Do we have anybody else?
Yes, sir. Bobby Forbes.
Ms. Forbes.
Bobby Forbes, Grand Terrace. I'd like to bring up the crematory that they're talking about building on Locketina Drive between Barton Road and the old Club 215. It's a Colton address, and the residents of La Loma Hill received a letter from the AQMD company, I'm not sure what else to call them, regarding their test that they're going to do regarding having a crematory near our high school, near the residence, near my house, near many homes that are people that are sitting here tonight. And I really had never thought about what a crematory could do to a neighborhood. When I was at the Colton council meeting last week, they said they knew nothing about it. The planning commissioner, Gary Grossowich, said he knew nothing about it. Apparently, their staff was the only one that knew about it. And so, because the AQMD has not completed their report or their inspection testing, it hasn't gone before the planning commission yet, and it doesn't appear that Colton and Grand Terrace really talk to each other much. So, that's why I'm bringing this up. I think the residents of Grand Terrace need to know about it. La Loma Hill is part of Grand Terrace. It's not just Colton. And this is going to create something in our air. I don't really know what, but something is going to come from this, and I am very concerned. So, that's my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, tonight, we're doing a special presentation for Dr. Sig, that's his nickname. Sir, can you come up to the podium here? So, what we have is a special presentation in honor of your retirement, and I'm going to read this, and then I'll give the council members a few minutes to speak on, you know, your behalf, and then if you'd like to say any words, and then we'll take a picture. All right? So, the City of Grand Terrace certificate of recognition presented to Dr. Leonard Sigistat Devm. Congratulations on the well-deserved retirement, your dedication, compassion have made a profound difference in the lives of the countless animals and their owners in our community. You experienced a kind heart and have not only healed many pets, but you also provided comfort, reassurance to their families. Wishing you all the best for relaxation, adventure, and new beginnings in your legacy of care and kindness, you will always be remembered. Presented this 13th day of August, 2024, signed by myself, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Allen, Councilmember Savino, and Councilmember Henderson. So, would the council like to say anything? Mayor Pro Tem?
Sure. Thank you. I've known Doc Sig for a long time, through the Lions Club, obviously, in the first meeting, but he is a very generous soul, and I really appreciate his service through the years. I don't know, he hung on as long as he did. He's got to be up there close to the century mark, you know, so. Anyway, he's all about service, and that's the best you can do in this world. Service to fellow men and women, and service to those little animals that really need the service and to look at you with those watery eyes. I look at you, sir, as a saint, and I appreciate you being before us. Thank you, and congratulations in your retirement.
Councilman Henderson?
I don't know Dr. Sig as well as others, but I know that he's an institution in this community. I'm not a pet owner, but many of my friends, all of my friends, as a matter of fact, who are pet owners who live in Grand Terrace and the surrounding area swear by Dr. Sig. So, thank you, sir, for all that you have done for this community, and we wish you well as you go into the next chapter of your very busy life. Thanks again.
Councilman Allen?
Tonight, I have a happy dollar for all the years that I've known you. And I don't have enough dollars to say how many happy dollars I'd lay out there, Doc, for how long I've known you, or I'd put them all out there. And I have a sad dollar because my kitty cat, my three-legged kitty cat, said she's going to miss you, and all my other cats, whose lives you've saved and kept alive over the years, and horses, thank you. So, thank you for your service to our community, the happy dollars. I met you in Kiwanis when we were in Kiwanis together for all those years, and that's how I learned about the happy and sad dollars, and I think it's a great idea, but more than that, I think the best idea I ever saw was the service that you provided to our community in so, so, so many ways that people don't even know about. So, thank you from my heart.
Councilman Savino?
Dr. Sig, there's nothing more that I can add to what's already been said here, except just to express my gratitude for everything that you've done for this community. Again, you are a staple here in Grand Terrace, and, you know, we are just thankful for everything that you've done, and congratulations on your retirement, sir. It's well deserved. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Sig, I appreciate all the times when I brought my pets in there, and you asked me what's going on with the city, and I go, I don't know, I'm bringing my pet in, but, you know, I really appreciate it. And you've always been involved in the city, you know, and then, what, original Lions Club member, too, right? Yeah, so you have a proud history here in this city, and the city thanks you, and we always thank you, and, you know, you are, you know, we're blessed to have you for everything that you've done for our city. And I know you're not going to just go out and retire and relax and stuff, I'm sure you're going to be doing other stuff, but, you know, thank you for letting us hike up Blue Mountain, thank you for letting us use your parking lot during, you know, the cars and coffee, and then, you know, the fairs and everything else, and, you know, and just thank you for everything you do. You know, I can't thank you enough, but we appreciate you and your family, and enjoy your retirement, sir. So, if you'd like to say a few words?
Sure. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. Thank you, Conrad, for your nice coin here, I sure appreciate it. This really isn't about me, it's about volunteers and everybody else that's helped to make this community what it is. For the animal control, we have people like Bobby Forbes, who give time after time, after hours after hours of rescuing dogs, finding homes, taking care of pets, that really is attribute, really a positive thing for the city of Grand Terrace. As Conrad mentioned at Lions Club the other morning, it's about teamwork and togetherness of city and people that make this city great, and I just did my part of what I normally would do for anybody and anything, and I certainly appreciate the recognition you gave me, but it isn't about me, it's about all of us, and we need to all continue to work together to make this city great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you could join us up here, we're picturing the council, appreciate it.
Bobby Forbes?
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's, it's up there. You'll be called upon. No, who are you with, sir? Did you fill out a card? Yeah, this, yeah, this, sorry.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I know this is unusual. Leonard, I have spent more time, more money, more hours next to you at that veterinarian office than any doctor in my entire life. I thank you from the bottom of my heart. You've been my doctor, my vet, since 1987, and I'm so grateful for your service and what you do for the community, and that they are acknowledging you. Thanks again.
And thank you, Bobby, for everything you've done, too. We had somebody else?
I did have an additional speaker card for public comment. Art Marquez?
Okay. Come on down, sir. We just wanted to see you walk back and forth, I know.
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, city staff. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to make this public comment. I just wanted to take the time to formally introduce myself as the new Public Affairs Manager for SoCal Gas. For those of you that have been fortunate enough to work with Christine Scott for so many years, she has now been promoted, so she is my boss officially, and I'll be taking over her roles and responsibilities. So, just like Christine Scott, I hope to be your direct contact and things SoCal Gas related. Look forward to working with you guys, continuing our partnerships, and working together to see how we can better our community. I'll make sure you guys all get my contact information as well.
Thank you, sir. So, are you going to run for city council also in the league of cities like Christine did?
You know, she told me none of that was planned, so, as I could tell you, it's not planned, but who knows?
Well, thank you for introducing yourself.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate you working with the city. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, so is there any other public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. So, let's go ahead and go to the consent counter, item D. The following consent counter items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon at the city council at any one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizens may request removal of any items of the consent counter for discussion. So, do we have any public comment on the consent counter?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have a comment? No, sir.
Okay, so, the council like to remove any items?
Yes. Six, please.
For discussion? All right. Any other ones? Okay, we have a removal, item six for discussion, so do I have a vote, a motion for one through five and seven?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I would recommend that we hold all the Lewis Group-related items together before we vote on those.
All right. So, Mayor Pro Tem, item six?
Item number six, Mayor. I would like this, if the city manager could expand on the diff fees and how all that works, because I do know that we have some progressive draws that we're going to have to be responsible for when it comes to the storm drain system and possibly road, and so I just kind of wanted to know how that was all going to work for our side.
Sure, and to back up a little bit, I'm sure you as a council understand, but for the citizens of the audience, development impact fees are fees that are charged to a developer for their impact on existing infrastructure and their incremental increase on those demands to the existing infrastructure. So, if you build a house, you don't necessarily have to build a whole sewer plant for it, but you do have a marginal capacity in the sewer plant, pipes, and everything tied to that. So, this is the contribution of the developer to increase the capacity of what's already there. It was very typical in large developments, like we're talking about with the Lewis Group, that these development impact fees are treated as credits, because the developer is doing such a large install, they're not, I mean, they're building massive portions of sewer line, they're building huge detention basins and stormwater systems on the bottom end of the city where we need it the most, and so it's a big increment for us, and for part of that, then they get their credit, because they're adding into the existing capacity of the city, not by buying into it, by building into it. So, these, we have this design that there are incremental credits for the development impact fees for Lewis as they build into the system.
And how are those credits figured? Are they 100% credits, or are they some percentage of what they bill?
They are dollar for dollar. So, the amount, and typically on these projects, they will spend much more in building these than they actually would pay for the development impact fees. So, we will give them credit up to that amount, to what the fee would be, and then they would have to then, on their cost, build the remainder of that infrastructure as part of their project.
Okay, so the separate issue, then, is the question about the progressive amounts of money that we will be, as a city, responsible for, you know, our share, or what you call our fair share, of improvements that are going to happen so far as road work and that kind of thing. So, how does that work? I noticed that it was brilliantly set up so that we at least are able to tie it to certificate of occupancies in various units, which is really important for us, because it allows us to, the luxury of cash flow. But, you know, how is that all going to kind of fit together in a nutshell?
So, the, our contribution is primarily in roads, and Lewis will essentially, and they've done the engineering for the entire commerce section, they will be building a big portion of that, and what typically happens in a development, the developer builds the road on theirs, again, adjacent to their property, the full half width of the road, plus one lane. But because of where this sits, there isn't anybody on the other side of the road, it's freeway, detention basin, and we still need the other half of that road. So, the city would have to build that piece of road anyway, and we're using, we're then partnering with Lewis, so they will build the road at full width, and we will pay them for the piece of city road that they will build for us.
Kind of explains a little bit about the reason why there are areas in the city that have nothing but asphalt curb, because that old half-street situation was a neat idea, but practical-wise, it didn't work very well.
It didn't work, and it's something that's a newer idea, it wasn't done in the, even as late as the 80s and maybe even to the 90s. So, some, a lot of these new streets, you didn't build the half-street, you built just your own curb and gutter and left it be, and so that's why we have the jogs on Michigan, those in-and-outs as the street got wider and narrower, depending on the standards. So, we're trying to avoid that on commerce and have a continuous street end-to-end, and from a practical standpoint, if Lewis builds it, it's less expensive than if we build it and go back and do it a second time.
Oh, absolutely, because you get the benefit of quantity.
Yes.
And move-ins and the rest of it. When it comes to the, for example, sewer or maybe even storm drain, which is probably the biggest consideration, would it be fair to say that it's a upsized charge that we are going to be talking about credits? In other words, they'll build portions of the system that would be, would have been their responsibility as part of that, but then, and they'll get credit for those, that construction, but then the remainder of the stuff would be what we would consider an upsized to be able to accommodate city things. For example, we have an awful lot of, we've got 1,000-foot elevation difference from the top of slope down to the toe of slope on Blue Mountain. All of that stuff that's uphill of the Lewis track is not really their responsibility, but part of it does kind of mix in there. So, how do we get the formula straight?
So, the way that works is, is as a developer, you're responsible for handling the water that falls on your site and passing the water through your site that already lands there. So, unfortunately, they're at the bottom of the hill, and they're at the terminal piece, so they can't pass the water through, they have to do something with it. And as actually a big part of their project, there's going to be five acres of detention basin that will catch this water from the top of Blue Mountain that's passing all the way through the city, and then that very small increment that they will add with their project, and then they have to handle it. So, there's, you're 100% correct, that there's a huge portion of that is handling what we're already dumping there and treating it properly so that the rest of the site can be utilized to its best extent.
And one day, we might even get upstream storm drain, to actually connect all that.
We are working to that point. Instead of just dumping it on them, yes.
Thank you. I think the way it's set up right now, it's very definitely to the benefit of the citizens of Grand Terrace. I can see that there's been a lot of elbow grease applied to this mechanism. I've read every page in the development agreement, and it would seem to me that it was put together with a lot of knowledge, and I appreciate your service.
Thank you, and Lewis is a good partner to work with, so thank you.
Okay, so Mayor Pro Tem, you may get a motion from one through 13, then?
Motion for approval for one through 13?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Savino. City Attorney, you have anything to say?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I will read the title of the ordinances on items four, five, six, and seven that are set for second reading and adoption tonight, and then I will read a statement regarding item 13, regarding the city manager amendment to his contract. So, with respect to item four, the title of the ordinance is "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, Adopting Specific Plan SP 17-01 for the Gateway at Grand Terrace Specific Plan." For Agenda Item Five, the ordinance is entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, Adopting Zone Change ZC 17-02 and Zone Change Amendment ZCA 24-01 for the Gateway at Grand Terrace Specific Plan and Repealing and Replacing Chapter 18.09 Districts and MAP and Chapter 18.20 Specific Plan Districts of Title 18 Zoning of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code in Their Entirety." Agenda Item Six, the ordinance is entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, Approving the Development Agreement by and Between the City of Grand Terrace and Lewis Land Developers LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company pursuant to Article 2.5 of Chapter 4 of Division 1 of Title VII, Section 65864 through 65869.5 of the Government Code and Article 11, Section 2 of the California Constitution for the Gateway at Grand Terrace Specific Plan." And lastly, Agenda Item Seven, the ordinance is entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, Approving Zone Change Amendment ZCA 24-03 to amend the Grand Terrace Municipal Code Title 18 zoning to add new residential land uses called congregate living health facilities and electric vehicle charging stations to the allowable residential land uses listed in Chapter 18.10 Residential Districts to add non-residential hours of operation and to consolidate all non-residential land uses identified under Section 18.06.032 and Chapters 18.30-AP Administrative Professional District, 18.33 C2 General Business District, 18.36 CM Commercial Manufacturing District, 18.39 MR Restricted Manufacturing District, 18.40 M2 Industrial District, 18.43 PUB Public Facilities District into a table format under a new Chapter 18.27 Non-Residential Districts to add new non-residential land uses called heavy equipment rentals, indoor and outdoor, electric vehicle charging stations, restaurants with a cocktail lounge, bar, entertainment or dancing, and establishments with onsite alcohol, beverage sales, and consumption that are not bona fide eating establishments, bars, taverns, cocktail lounges, breweries, distilleries, and/or wine-making facilities with sales for onsite and offsite consumption. So, each of those ordinances are on for second reading and adoption tonight, with reading of the ordinances waived. Lastly, for Agenda Item 13, in the year 2016, Senate Bill SB 1436 was adopted, which impacts the process for approving the compensation of a local agency executive. To encourage transparency, SB 1436 requires that, before taking final action, a local agency's legislative body orally report a summary of the recommended compensation of a local agency executive. This report must be made during the same open meeting in which final action on the compensation is to be taken. Accordingly, before the city council this evening, is Agenda Item 13, to amend the city manager agreement. If approved, the city council will be approving the following. Number one, it would be extending the term of the contract by five years until January 2nd, 2030. It will adjust the annual base salary upon approval of the Third Amendment tonight from 219,732.48 annually to 241,000 annually, and provide a one-time retention payment of $2,900 to encourage the city manager's continued retention under the terms of the agreement. It will provide a 5% base pay increase each July 1st, beginning next year, through the term of the agreement. It will increase the severance from six months to 12 months in the event of termination without cause, subject to the terms and conditions of the agreement. And lastly, it will update the definition of cause in the context of And lastly, it will update the definition of cause in the context of forecause termination. So I'm very happy, I'm done with all that.
Can you repeat all that?
No, I can't. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Does the council have anything else to add, that want to add anything? Councilman Henderson?
I just wanted to congratulate Lewis Development Partners with the City of Grand Terrace and our City Manager Development Services Director and staff involved in this process. I think it's important for the community to appreciate that the Gateway at Specific Plan is already the most consequential project that this city has ever considered. It's a hundred and twelve-acre specific plan that provides for six hundred and ninety-five housing units, three hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet of commercial retail, and a host of infrastructure improvements that were outlined in the questions of my colleague, Mayor Pro Tim Wilson, and the answers of the City Manager. This was a project that took ten years from start to finish, well, ten years from start to, to today, which is the beginning of this process. And so I hope the citizens of this community appreciate all that has gone into it and what will happen in the near future. It will be a significant project that changes forever the economic trajectory of the City of Grand Terrace. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Anybody else? Well, I just want to reemphasize item thirteen, because everybody always says stuff, you know, but I want to thank Conrad for wanting to stick with the City of Grand Terrace for another five years. You have done a lot, and, I mean, and, you know, you could have asked for a lot more, and you are very considerate with our residents and stuff, and I really appreciate you helping our city out. And nothing but good things. I hear about Conrad, you know, when we went to the last chamber meeting and that Get Loaded, and they talked, you know, the businesses all like him. I think he paid him off first, but I think he had those happy dollars like Jeff had and paid him off, but, but, you know, thank you, Conrad. And it's not just a, a nine-to-five job, it's twenty-four-seven, because when I get a call, I call Conrad. Now, I don't get paid as much as Conrad, but, you know, but, um, not, no one here as much as Conrad, but, but, you know, it is a twenty-four-hour day job, and, you know, he is bringing a lot of good businesses here, and he's, and he, you know, he really loves this city, and we appreciate it, so thank you. Okay, so I have a motion by the Mayor Pro Tim and a second by Councilwoman Sabino, so anything else before we vote? Please vote.
And it passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you all.
And thank you, Lewis, for sticking with us. Okay, public hearing, none, unfinished business, none, new business. Item fourteen, Community Benefit Fund awarded to the Grand Terrace Tribe Baseball Club in the amount of two thousand dollars. Any public comment on fourteen? Oh, I'm sorry, Christine, go ahead.
If you'd like to skip me, that's fine.
No, I, I figured you were walking, I might as well. I was trying to make you walk faster, that's all.
Sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, council members. Christine Clayton, Finance Director. Before you tonight is the Community Benefit Fund that was sent to us from the Grand Terrace Tribe Baseball Club, and they are requesting two thousand dollars to purchase equipment for the fall season, which is currently August through December. And I have Sandra and Mark Romo to speak for the club's behalf.
Hi, thank you, I'm Sandra, this is my husband, Mark. We began GT Tribe Baseball Club in two thousand and nineteen. It was birthed out of a Little League All-Star team here in Grand Terrace with about twelve parents that were trusting in us to go play competitive baseball in the offseason. So flash forward to today, about five and a half years later, we have nine teams servicing about a hundred different players from the ages of eight years old all the way through high school in divisions representing a number of different areas. We're proud, though, that the majority of our players that play with us are local to the Grand Terrace community, either as residents here in Grand Terrace or attending a Grand Terrace school. In addition to that, we're really proud with our first team that my husband started and managed. We have about seven of the starting varsity baseball players at Grand Terrace High play for our organization and began with our organization in two thousand and nineteen. Additionally, we incorporated as a nonprofit last year, and our goal is to provide low-cost competitive baseball, which is a little different than recreation ball, like the Little League, for those that want to just increase their skill and their development and things like that. And so since our incorporation as a nonprofit, we've been able to, this year, provide our inaugural college scholarship, and we awarded that about a month ago to a graduate from Grand Terrace High School in class of two thousand and twenty-four. He was a football player, and we are hoping that this grant will help us to continue to provide other items to the community by offsetting some of our costs to provide equipment to our coaches. All of our coaches and managers, our volunteers in our organization, and oftentimes provide their own baseballs, their nets, all of the equipment necessary to run a practice, and then to go play and games and, and things of that nature. So we're very grateful for your consideration for this grant that will help our organization.
Thank you. The council have any questions? Councilman Allen?
We met earlier, and, and I congratulate you, I just, my hats are off to you, this is, I'm so pleased that you chose Grand Terrace to start. Is it safe to assume your organization is based in Grand Terrace, is correct?
It's primarily based in Grand Terrace. We're, we live in Colton, so the address is.
So, but that's great, and, and do you utilize our ball fields for the games, a lot of the games and all that?
We do, we have field usage at Grand Terrace High School currently, and we are able to use Veterans Freedom Park when it's in the offseason from the Little League and things like that, and have contracted with the city before for that.
Okay, that's great. Okay, well, again, thank you so much for what you do for our community.
Councilwoman Sabino?
I just wanted to add, I grew up in a baseball family, so I know the importance of, you know, just that community and that camaraderie. And I love that you mentioned that you are five oh one C three. If we could connect maybe later, I have your contact information here. I did connect with some of the other nonprofits in the area. There are organizations that will help you stretch your dollar, the redistribution centers, and they can curate that, so definitely whatever we can do, we can do to better help you and support you, please let us know, thank you.
Wonderful, we appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, one important thing, can you send us a schedule when your games are? I like to go out there and scream for you, yell for you, and.
Absolutely, we are finalizing our teams for the fall season, they're all getting practice going, and the games start sometime in September, but we'd be happy to share with you some of our.
Yeah, if you could send the City Manager or City Clerk so we could, you know, go out there and support you guys, and then, we just had Lewis here too, and they're actually going to be building a, a new baseball field for the community.
Oh, wonderful. We actually have an annual tribe barbecue, like, season kickoff event. Last year, we hosted it at Veterans Freedom Park in the fall, we're hoping to maybe do that again, and so we'd be happy to invite any of you guys out to meet our families and things like that.
Any type of fundraisers and stuff, and we'd love to be involved. So do we have any public comment on this? No? Well, thank you, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion for this item.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote.
It passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you. Before you leave, I'd just like to compliment you on your presentation to the City Council. We have received a number of requests over the years for the Community Benefit Fund, and from my tenure on the council, your presentation was, was outstanding and probably the best that I've witnessed. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Okay, item fifteen.
Item fifteen, so Christine Clayton, Finance Director. So we received a Community Benefit, Fit Fund application from the Grand Terrace Chamber of Commerce, and they're requesting two thousand dollars to help put on the Forty-third Annual Country Fair. And with us is Tony Epps to speak on behalf of the chamber.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, thank you, City Manager, everyone in attendance, thank you so much for having me. I'm Tony Epps with the Chamber of Commerce, and I was requesting funds for, to put on the country fair. The Chamber of Commerce is barely getting started and getting things going, so there's not a whole lot of funds in, on our bank account. So we, we want to request funds to put on the country fair for the city. It's at the Forty-third Annual, it's, it's something that the, the city and the community come to expect from us. It's a vibrant and engaging event that brings together the residents of Grand Terrace, and our goal is to create a festive atmosphere that not only entertains, but also fosters community spirit, and it promotes the local businesses, that's why, chamber. The event will also feature a variety of attractions, including local food vendors, crafts, live entertainment, games, and activities of all ages. The initiative, this initiative is a testament to our commitment to the betterment of the community and providing a platform, platform for our local entrepreneurs and organizations to showcase their contributions. So we humbly ask the council that if you can provide the requested funds to put this on, they'll be put good, you know, put to good use and for the betterment of the, of the community. And also, I'm, I'm on the board of the Lions, Jeff, so I'll be by for those happy and sad dollars.
So when is, when is the, the fair?
It's September twenty-eighth, Saturday, September twenty-eighth.
Okay.
And it's actually located in the Professional Plaza, which again is donated by Dr. Sig.
And what time will the fair be from?
Nine AM to seven PM.
Okay. The council have any other questions? No? Do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
All right, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion, move this item.
Motion by?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Henderson, please vote.
And it passes unanimously, not unanimously, but it passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for putting on the fair.
No, you got it.
All right, item sixteen.
Christine Clayton, Finance Director. So we received a Community Benefit Fund application from the Grand Terrace High School Titan Wrestling Booster Club, say that three times fast, and they are requesting two thousand dollars for their tournament fees. Last year, they participated in ten tournaments, and they were able to participate due to donations, which they may not always get the same amount, so they are here to speak, and I have Victor Zamora to speak to you on behalf of the club.
Okay.
Thank you for having me. My name is Victor Zamora, I'm the president of the Boosters Club for the wrestling team in Grand Terrace. We want to grow the program to reach more kids. This summer, we were able to have some middle schools, middle schoolers participate in the sport, and I would like to make it even bigger, where like, I can see like, like the same way the soccer teams, the soccer club, and the Little League is in Grand Terrace. But all this, it takes a lot of commitment, not just from the wrestlers, but also from the coach, parents, and also the community. My love for the sport, why I'm so involved with it, is because I served in the Marine Corps, and when I was in there, I noticed that, when I grapple with people, you know, and the people that usually give me a hard time, and I noticed they were built a little different with wrestlers, they were somehow more mentally strong, they were harder to break than, than most people. I think this sport really teaches people the true meaning of hard work, their constant search for improvement, and just being very resilient, like not quitting. So that, aside from keeping the kids also fit, teaching them nutrition, it also, it helps with a lot of these kids' self-esteem, you know, so I think it has a lot of benefits that it can bring to the community. Like I said, we want to be able to participate in tournaments, and this year, you know, we already ran the numbers, it's about four thousand dollars, and that's just to participate in this, in these tournaments. There's also, I like to make sure that all the kids are fed, you know, about seventy-five percent of the kids, you know, after they weigh in, they, you know, their parents are able to contribute feeding, but, you know, I want, I want to see all the kids be, you know, eat something before a match, you know, it's a salad that goes in it. So I like to have everybody fed before the tournaments, and it's, it's not easy, but, you know, when I first started, I was hoping somebody would just take the lead, but I didn't see nobody doing it, so I had to step up, and now I, I felt that obligation to keep it going for, for them, for more years to come. And it's, it has taken a lot of dedication, and we have the coach, Vince, right here, and he, he volunteers a lot of his time, you know, during the summer. He, I mean, he, he gets paid from the school, but it's not much, you know, and most of the time is, is him volunteering his time. So I think that covers, and it's, Coach Vince went to say something?
Hello, Honorable Members of the Council. Yeah, I am the coach of the Grand Terrace High School Wrestling Team. I coach three teams, both boys, girls, and boys JV. Part of the struggle that we have for some of our fundraising is that unlike other sports, the school district considers wrestling co-ed, even though that they participate in separate events and they have their own separate CIFs, masters, and state programs. Some of the other schools within our district, they're very low in numbers with their girls' program, whereas last year, our girls' program shot up, we had a full team of, of, of girls, and, and that's kind of unlikely in, in our area, and so I was very proud of our, for you guys that don't know, girls' wrestling in America has been almost thirty percent each year jumping up in numbers, and we seen it over here in Grand Terrace with a lot of girls' participation, and unfortunately, since it is considered a co-ed sport, we have to manage our funds between three teams, which is kind of unfortunate. Some of the other sports, like girls', like soccer and, and basketball and baseball, they're, they're separated by the genders, whereas for whatever reason, the school district kind of sees wrestling as kind of a co-ed sport. I think it's because it's more of an obscure sport, not, a lot of people know too much about it. And just like Victor said, it is a very difficult sport, it, it takes a lot on the, the students to participate. They have to manage a lot of things that a lot of the other sports don't have to do. One of them is their, their weight, they got to make sure, because it's separated by weight categories, and it's very hard to do that while, you know, going through a rough sport, because it is a very, it's the only combat sport that we have on, on school, kind of like boxing's a combat sport, where it's one-on-one competitions, the same thing with wrestling, and they have to, the students have to manage all that while making sure they're maintaining their grades, which we want to make sure that they're, they're doing. And just like Victor had said, it is a very beneficial sport, that a lot of these things they learn in wrestling carry over to when they enter adulthood and, and the workforce, they make very good workers and productive members of society. So we, yeah, we do like to see that grow, but yeah, we do need a little bit of help, and so we, we thank you for considering us for this fund.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Sabino. Well, thank you, Councilmember Savino.
First of all, thank you for your service to this country. And second, I love what you're doing as the mother of a little girl who's nine and who engages in jujitsu. I understand that, you know, the similarities in the sport where you have to control your emotions and you have to, you know, think through those situations and the physical and mental toughness that it takes to be able to persevere in that type of sport and the patience. So again, thank you for what you're doing. And as I said to the other organization, if you are a nonprofit, I'm happy to provide a referral to other organizations. That will help stretch your dollar. So again, thank you both.
Anybody else? Yes, thank you. And you know, you got me sewed on Marines and wrestling, so you know. Being in the Marine Corps and plus I wrestled in ninth and 10th grade. And it took me forever to grow my chin hair back because you know, you leave it stubble because people don't realize you dig into people's foreheads like that, you know. You use everything you can. I don't think the girls have to worry about that, do you, you guys? You have to, but you know, we would just barely shave it. But yeah, the eating, of course, I was skinny back in those days. I wish I was still now, but you know, I didn't have to go on those, the sweats and all that stuff. But I know a lot of guys had a really diet and they weigh in and they're just trying to get, you know, some energy going on there. And my son, he wrestled. And when I got out of the Marine Corps, yeah, wrestling did help because I worked in the federal prisons, so you know. And then my son, he's a police officer, so it did help him. But you are, you're right. It's people like, oh, you wrestle, but you know, you're thinking, it's almost like playing chess. You're thinking like two or three moves ahead. You know, if this guy does that, I have to do this. If this person does this, I have to do that. So it is, and then it's, you know, it's very strenuous. And you know, my brother-in-law always makes fun of me because he played football and I wrestled and stuff. I said, well, we didn't need pads. We just went out there and did their stuff. But my coach had cauliflower ears because they never wore the headgear, you know. And so I don't have cauliflower ears. My ears stick out, but I wear hearing aids, but I guess I was close. But you know, thank you, guys. And you know, please send us a schedule too, because you know, I'd love to go see some of your matches and stuff and really enjoy that. And you know, and the city's here to support you. And also for the high school too, you know, send us the schedule on that, so. Do I have anything else, Councilman? Do I have any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve this. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion second, please vote.
Thank you.
It passes unanimously, thank you.
Oh yeah, and I think the city manager wrestled too, so he was smiling. Okay, so item H, future agenda items, we have none. Does the council have any? At this time, the city council may propose items of discussion or actions at a future duly-agendaized city council meeting consistent with majority of the quorum is required to be placed any items on the agenda. So do we have any requests? Nope. Okay, city communications. Councilwoman Savino, you have any? None at this time? Okay. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, along with my colleagues, attended the Condor Energy Storage Project, Condor Energy Storage Project last week. This is a significant project for the city of Grand Terrace. It was well-attended by the community, chamber members, a host of Condor staff and the executive director, excuse me, the chief executive officer of Condor. This has been a project long-term coming, long-time coming, excuse me, and will only benefit Grand Terrace going forward. I also attended the employee luncheon with Mayor Pro-Tim Wilson. It was a wonderful event, feeding our hard-working employees, getting their service awards. The city manager, Mr. Bolowitz, developed a package for all the employees that provide information to the city council in terms of staff reports and things of that nature. And it was, professionalizes that aspect of their presentations to the city council. Also, I'd like to compliment the city manager and the executive staff on the morale displayed at the employee luncheon. It's reflective of what we have heard tonight in terms of our volunteerism, hard work, and resiliency. And I was happy to participate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. So this past week, in addition to what Councilmember Henderson was talking about, so I'm sure you remember, I think actually you were probably the one that kind of was the motivation or the start of this. Do you remember sometime back that we had, for some reason, we were asked to be part of the San Bernardino County Homeless Partnership? So I've been attending the San Bernardino County Homeless Partnership meetings. And those include the Interagency Council on Homelessness meetings and also the, the... Well, I'm trying to think of the name of this other one meeting that, this other committee, they always call it by an acronym, and I can't think of what the acronym means. However, the Regional Steering Committee, that's what I was trying to think of. So there's five regional steering committees. There's the East Valley, West Valley, Central Valley, Mountain Region, and the Desert Region. So we're part of the Central Valley Region. And so at the last meeting, at the last Homeless Partnership meeting, they voted to increase the size of the Regional Steering Committee by two to four seats to allow more government and non-government members. And so they voted from that, and they did pass that. And then they all, then they nominated people to fill those seats. And I was one of the people, persons nominated and voted to fill one of those seats on the Regional Steering Committee.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. So I just want to let you know what the Regional Steering Committee is made up of local nonprofits, faith-based organizations, education, city and county entities, leaderships that are created and created to represent the five regions within the San Bernardino County Continuum of Care that provides leadership and serves as a regional advisory bodies for the Interagency Council on Homelessness. And so in closing, I just think that this, I just want to add that I believe this supports goal number four of our 2030 vision, which is develop and implement successful partnerships, working collaboratively with community groups, private and public sector agencies, to facilitate and the delivery of services benefiting youth, seniors in our community by working with local, regional, and state agencies to secure funding for programs and projects. So that's what we'll be, I'll be taking part in. And that's, and one of the things that we did also was like earlier today, we had a landlord fair. And what this was, was this was an opportunity for landlords to come together with the Family Assistance Program to learn how they can be a part of providing better, more housing to the homeless. So that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Mayor Pro-Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I did attend the Condor Energy Storage Ribbon Cutting. It was hotter than a pistol. You're really glad that you, if you didn't go, you weren't there because it was, the only relief we had was under a tent with fans that were blowing water. And, but in that timeframe, we got a chance to talk to some people that are higher up in their organization and they conveyed their appreciation of the city of Grand Terrace. Also went to the Employee Recognition Luncheon with Councilman Henderson. And there was a lot of good feelings there. And you can definitely tell that, it's the old adage, you know, stuff rolls downhill. I can tell you that, you know, city manager has, has created an atmosphere of good feelings among the employees. They're all expected to do what they need to do as a job. But at the same time, people care about each other, and that's neat. Also attended the Joint Powers Insurance Agency, or JPIA, board meeting over in La Palma. We voted on a couple of items, especially the budget and their progress to date. They're in the process of building another building adjacent to where they were or where they are. And we had a nice little meal on top of it. And I finally found a whole abundance of cherry lifesavers. So that was important. And the latest thing that I attended was the BIA-sponsored water conference. And it has to do with water all the way up and down the state. And the people that attended this thing are not only water agencies, but also a lot of PhDs and so on that know what they're talking about. And there were three or four different segments of it that were separate. But in those, I asked one of the PhD, I said, so okay, I listened to all the stuff. But what's really dragon tail? Why can't we seem to get to that starting point and get the rest of it going? And I said, is it environmental? Is it financing? Is it engineering? I mean, tell me the truth. And the guy said, it's financing, baby. It's funding. Really comes down to this. A lot of people need to believe in this thing, other than people in our pay grade, to understand what a critical situation this is. They were experts on the state water system, and they mostly talked about the Sykes Reservoir, which is north of us by quite a bit. And that is going to be the main area that will help augment what they did 100 years ago. And that is, the water system at this point is set up to capture snowfall. Well, the environment's changed. Gee, in 100 years, I guess it makes sense. And in the long run, we're not, we don't get as much snowpack as we used to. And so the capture of this water, I'm sure you're like I am, when we see these big deluge rains and things, you figure, well, why can't they just suck up all this water? Well, they do suck up a lot of it. But our infrastructure is ancient enough that it does not do what we need it to do. And so in that realm, if you ever get the opportunity to write your congresspeople or whatever, it wouldn't be a bad idea to mention the fact that we're thirsty and we'd like to get, we'd like to get the system upgraded. Also, they talked about the San Joaquin Delta Project. And not many people know what that really contains. But in essence, it's where the ocean drifts into the freshwater business. And right now, there's a bunch of smelt, whatever smelts are. And the way the project was planned, it would, it would create a circumstance where it would destroy a lot of smelts because they squish them up in a bunch of rotary blades. So what they're looking to do is to put a underground tunnel that will bypass all of that stuff and not mess up the smelts. This has taken 40 years, folks. It's only one reason why that happens, because we don't put enough pressure on them to get it squared away. So again, I would encourage you to communicate with your representatives and see if they can squeeze out something that'll be helpful to us and for future generations. Because you know, I'm getting closer to like Doc Sigistad, so I don't know if it's going to help me much by the time they get there. But you've got a lot of people that are going to be backed up against this. They're going to wonder why they've got all these environmental constraints. Anyway, so it was a busy month. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mayor Pro-Tim, for representing the city. And you know, you talk about water. I just heard on the news today that they're going to be drilling, or try to drill seven miles down Mars because they believe water is there. And the whole plant was supposed to be covered by water, they said 300 million years ago. So hopefully we don't get to that stage. But one other thing, Councilman Allen forgot to announce, that the chamber meeting is tomorrow from 8:00 to 9:00 at Woody's. And we'll be recognizing the business of the month, which will be birds. So if you can make it out there tomorrow morning and you know, grab some breakfast and just come out there and see what the chamber's got going. And you know, you could join the chamber. Anybody could join the chamber. If you have a business, they'd really like to have you join the chamber. And good things happening. And then this Saturday is the soccer kickoff. So the council's been invited at 8:00, Richard Rollings Park. So I'd like to see everybody there. And I wish these teams good luck, and I'll be praying over them. And you know, thank you, city manager, for putting on the luncheon every year. You know, you definitely see the camaraderie of the staff coming. I'm sorry I missed it. And I was looking forward to that food. It was good food last year, so. And I guess, you know, we have recognitions for officer and firefighter of the year too. So it's good to recognize that. And you know, and I want to thank a lot of the residents in Yohann. They've been really working with Lieutenant Lane, getting our substation going. So if you guys ever get a chance, want to stop by and say hi to the officer, it's really looking nice. I'm thinking about moving in there. I get in trouble, but no, it's really nice. You know, you guys did a really good job. It's really neat to see that in the community. And you know, thank you, guys, for doing it. And thank you for these businesses that are donating snacks and drinks and stuff, you know. And I'm sure when it's all done, John, I'd like to have you give a presentation, you know, publicly thank everybody. But you know, and then the battery grand opening, the ribbon cutting, that was a unique thing. And you know, they asked me to do a quote, and I was like, I don't know what to say, you know. I'm very shy. So I just put on there like, waste not, watts not. So you know, don't waste any electricity, you know. And you know, it's really thing, you know, the California and the government ask us, will ask people, you know, hey, we got to figure ways to get electricity. We're not building any, you know, power plants. And you know, everything's supposed to be taboo, you know, as far as nuclear and stuff. But at least you already got electricity that's been generated and it's not going to waste. So you know, Condor, you know, they came with the solution, this battery thing. And you know, it's, and it's a good partnership with the city. And it's going to be a really good partnership with the schools. You know, I talked to all the, you know, teachers, engineer teachers and the science teachers, and they're really looking forward to it. And our teachers are going to be doing some art over there. So it looks better, you know. I know Councilman Allen gave a presentation on the old Gage Park, but it looks a lot better. We don't have people living in that park, and we don't have illegal activity in that park. So it makes, you know, every time we do a project and every time we have something developed, it takes away something else like the illegal activities and stuff. So that's all I have for there. And so don't forget, Saturday at 8:00 is the soccer kickoff. And tomorrow morning from 8:00 to 9:00 at Woody's is the chamber. And city manager, you have anything?
I have no comments, but the chief has a brief presentation on, especially as we're entering fire season, defensible space, and how to keep your house from burning down.
Okay. Good afternoon, or sorry, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim, Council. Gary Yeager, Assistant Fire Chief of the East Valley Division. Obviously, in light of recent events, a fire to the south, a fire to the north. And as fire season is going to start to hit our area in the next four to six weeks heavily, and then obviously through October, I thought I'd take some time to talk about some defensible space and some notification. As I was doing my PowerPoint, I thought Lieutenant Lane would appreciate it. I'm probably at 23 slides, so I'll try to keep it as quick as possible. No, sorry. So just real quick, I'm going to talk about our wildfire response, a little bit on fire assurance, preparation for wildfire residential assessment program, and the wildland fire notifications. And then if you guys have any answers or sorry, questions and answers, I'll take those as well. Wildfire season is here and really comes down to, are you ready? And it looks like, when I talk about the city of Grand Terrace, it's really about Blue Mountain and what that looks like for us. You guys saw the fire that we had on Little Mountain. I was the incident commander, and we lost five homes. It was in light flashy fuels and annual grasses. And the fire this year, we're seeing are moving fairly quick to the south of us in the city of Riverside. One of the mountains that are the hills that burn very frequently for them, they had multiple homes damaged as well. So I thought I would take the opportunity just to talk about a couple of things to help us protect our residents here in the city of Grand Terrace. Real quick, fire history. The reason I bring this slide up is because if you look at it, we're looking at about every 23 years, the fuel bed grows back to what it naturally was. So our next old fire, if you will, which won't affect the city of Grand Terrace, but it gives us some perspective, we're there, where the fuel bed will be receptive and ready to go. Fire insurance, it's increased numbers of policy and cancellation. Fire insurance, it's increased numbers of policy and cancellations statewide, we're all aware of that, increases up 100 to 300% and many are forced to the California Fair Plan. If you want information on the California Fair Plan, www-insurance.ca.gov and they'll give you information if your insurance was canceled, like mine was up in the desert, even on the desert floor, there's a way for you to get insurance. The San Bernardino County Fire District brings a number of resources in collaboration with the sheriff as well. Obviously, our wildfire, our wildland camp is in the city of Devores. It's got hand crews and dozers that are equally accessible to the city of Grand Terrace along with brush engines, water tenders, obviously chief officers, large command post and our assistance with the sheriff with their water dropping helicopters, both belly tank and Bambi buckets. Local wildfire responses, we obviously have our, our district, we have agreements with the Forest Service, Cal Fire obviously on the other side into Ritchie Canyon, our local agreements and the aircraft MOU with the Sheriff Department. Red flag warning, just as a simple reminder, if you see red flags, that means we're an increased risk of fire danger. We try extremely hard to make sure we put the red flag up below the, the American flag at all of our fire stations. The weather patterns that can cause a watch or warn include low relative humidity, strong winds, dry fuels and the possibility of dry lightning strikes or any combination of the above. The other thing that we'll commonly do during red flag warnings will bring in pre-positioned units through OES to prepo throughout our zone or the county of San Bernardino. Ready, set, go, really quick. Ready, create a defensible home, prepare and have a plan and go early. Defendable versus non-defendable, I think this, this picture speaks for itself. Even though the fuels on the right are some of our medium to thicker fuels, as you know, the annual grasses can get up to four to six feet and can carry fire as well and they can carry flame lengths up to seven to 10 feet. Prepare your house, limit the combustibles directly around the home, ember resistant attic vents, wood piles or sheds away from the home and roofs that are non-combustible and clear of branches and leaves. A lot of these things the residents can do themselves. The thing that defensible space does for us is it allows our engine companies time to get in there and protect the homes. Low-cost and easy fix items, remove the wood piles from the home, screen attic vents with eighth, eighth inch mesh, limit the trees or shrubs, keep gutters and ground clear, minimize and eliminate the weeds, that's a huge one, keep windows closed and move sheds away from homes. Higher cost items are going to be the roof, make sure they're non-shake roofs, boxed eaves, dual-pane windows, non-combustible fencing, rock around home zero escape and non-combustible deck or patio. As we saw just recently in the city of San Bernardino, a lot of it was going up into the deck or patio and unfortunately, we did lose some structures. Prepare and plan, sign up for the telephone emergency notification systems or TENS. Also sign up for the mobile app, you can go and download the app right there and you can also create a family plan. Know where your pets are going to go, know if, if you're going to be gone, that the neighbors have access to your house, if you trust them obviously, and make sure that your family knows if a fast-moving brush fire is coming, where you guys are going to meet up at. There's the QR code for the TENS. And when it's ready to go, or when it's time to go, evacuate if asked to do so, leave early if needed, you don't have to wait for the district or SO to come up and tell you to leave and make sure you take your pertinent documents, medicine and other supplies as needed. Evacuation terminology, just very quickly, evacuation order, immediate threat to life. If you hear that go out or you see it on some of the apps that I'm about to show you, that means it's time to go. If you see an evacuation warning, it's just a potential threat to life and or property. Those might require additional time to evacuate and those with pets and livestock should leave now as it does take some time to move them. And shelter in place, a lot of times we'll use the shelter in place not for a fast-moving wildland fire, but more so where, since we're all risk, maybe an exposure or some type of hazmat release. Pulse Point, this is where we come into the notifications, all of these you can find in the App Store, depending on what platform you have. Pulse Point is simply is a 911 connected mobile app that can immediately inform you of emergencies occurring within your community, you can set it to what type of emergencies you want to know about, whether it be structure fires, traffic accidents. This one's really meant for CPRs, if you're in the area and you can do CPRs to help out your neighbors and family. I have Pulse Point, it's a, it's a good platform. Watchduty is probably one of the ones that we all use ourselves. It is the only wildfire mapping and alert powered by real people giving you real-time information. I will keep updates when I have the countywide duty chief using Watchduty. It will give you evacuation warnings, it'll tell you when to leave, it'll give you information and a map of where the fire is going. I, I can't tell you, it's always going to be 100% accurate because it is essentially volunteers that, that run this app, but I will tell you, I've been using it for about eight months and it's a valuable tool. Community Connect, it's a way for, it's, this is one of our apps, the county fire protection, protection apps and what this does is it allows us to share critical information about your household that will aid emergency personnel when responding to the residents. It'll allow for people who are in wheelchairs and accessible, if you have animals, things of that nature. It's a simple QR code, create an account, enter your information. What's valuable about this is it'll come to our tablet command that we all have in each one of our responding units and if I, in a company officer that's assigned to your house, it gives me the pertinent ins and outs of some of the assets or values at stake at your house. Very quick, if you guys have any questions, obviously I'm here for that and if you want more information, you can go to sbcfire.org. I'm available for any questions if you guys have anything.
The council have any questions? Well, I was walking, hiking over there by Riverside and by Sandals where that last fire was at and I noticed a lot of fire tape, you know, like taped off and I know there's homeless encampments there. Was that set by a homeless encampment that fire or did they know yet?
They don't know, but usually when, where the tapes surrounded for the point of origin, it's still under, under investigation, but...
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much and I think what, fire season is probably all year round now anymore, isn't it?
It is, it is. It'll go well into December, the first snow or rain.
Yeah, and I'm also a victim of the Fair Plan, so I hope I never have to use it, but at least it's a peace of mind and it was like five days before they approved me for that last fire, I was like, well, thank God.
Me too, Mayor, I hope I don't have to use it either.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you know, I'm going to go back to Conrad. Conrad, you need to tell us what this package is about.
For the council members, just we, as new residents move into the city, we get a list of all the homes that have sold and closed escrow for every month and we are mailing that out to each new resident, each new homeowner, new resident is not fair because we get people in apartments and rentals, but each new homeowner gets a welcome packet, it's got information about the city, who to contact, when our events are, all kinds of forms that you would normally use for, all the things you would normally use and, and as much, as much information as we can give you to welcome you to the community and make that seamless as you, you become part of the Grand, Grand Terrace family.
Well, thank you. It doesn't have a check to help pay off the house though, right?
It has no check.
Okay. You know what, it's, it's pretty good, I mean, it's, you know, a way to make people feel at home because Grand Terrace is a home, you know, this little town here. Okay, we have nothing else, thank you, chief, for your presentation. By the way, who got Officer of the Year and who got Firefighter of the Year?
Captain Mike Brimmer for the county fire district out of Station 23 for all his tireless work in replacing some of the infrastructure at this fire station. Always comes full circle.
And it was Deputy Demas Lopez for us.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, so a closed session then, we're going to go ahead and, well, adjourn to the next city council meeting will be held Tuesday, August 27, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Any requests, items to place on the future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk. Thank you, everybody, for coming out, good luck with the baseball and the wrestling season and God bless.